Twelfth year of asking for funding. So it's amazing. Twelfth year, twelfth year doing this with you all. Yes, thank you for your support over the years.
And you don't look available?
Thank you, I appreciate that. So we started in 2006 and of course Dick Bradshaw is here. He's one of our original board members. He's been one of our biggest supporters too. But I gave you a proposal of a lot of what we've been doing this year. And it's been a very busy year. I brought with me Amy Beechee. She is with Project Matters. That's who we contracted with for that Biz Excel program that you helped fund last year and this year. And just a quick summary, of course, you've seen we've done 13 ribbon cuttings. We've got another one next week. The State and the City County and Towns Luncheon is always well attended. We do third house with our state legislators. Senior Expo was last week to the county health department. She was there with a booth, so it was nice for her to get out and meet some new people. We've done a lot of things, the vacant festival, 9,000 people this year, so it was a good deal.
How many people?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand? Now, is that paid that came in the door?
Yes, it's paid with a credit card when they came in the door. So I've got a lot of credit card data from where people came from. I'll share that with you because it's pretty amazing where they come from.
How far away did they come from?
Oh, there were some from Texas. I mean, they follow those little bands like that, so it's kind of interesting. But I'll share that with you next time. And then we partnered with the Small Business Development Center. We do that every year, but now they're actually going to have office hours in our building. So anytime a new business needs some assistance, they can meet with him and we provide an office space. And then PCRD was new for us this year, Purdue Center for Regional Development. They've been doing these weekly digital ready business classes in our building. So people come from different places for those. So think about social media for business, online marketplace, things like that. And then we just launched last week a Carroll County Community Gift Card. So it's called the C Carroll County Card. C means shop, E means explore. And we have businesses that continue to sign up. You buy one gift card, it's good at all of those places. So we wanted to keep money local, just another way to encourage people to stay local, be local, explore local. So we look for that to be really impactful this next year.
Where do they buy the card?
It's online, so it's a digital mastercard. So you won't be able to print a card. You can print the number or you can have it on your phone. And as long as a business can enter a credit card number, then they can accept it. So it's kind of a neat program. We're excited about it. Just launched it last week. So you can go to the Chambers website and you'll see gift cards. You can go there and right now there's a map of 14 or 15 businesses. They keep adding, so we're trying to really load it up with our local folks. And then Biz Excel is a big thing for us last year and then this year. And I shared with you those results. Amy Kindersky has that for us. That's that revolving loan fund we got from the USDA. We have lent out all of the money. We've collected and we've lent some more, so it's revolved. That is the beauty of it. So right now we actually have $28,023 left to lend again to a small business or two that needs some funding. It's 3% interest. It's hard to be, so anyway, so we've got a local committee and Amy certainly has been instrumental in helping us with that. We've done three of those classes. We just finished a class a couple of weeks ago where they learned how to write a business plan. Get some ideas on how to finance. It's really a great class, so we have a strong class. Is anything about that?
Yeah, well, that's not only for startups, but existing businesses too. We know that that's where a lot of jobs come from, right? Small businesses. So we've already created 10 jobs through this program alone already. And I think those are good, stable jobs. Those are kind of, you know, when they have these training under their belt and they understand business planning and they understand how to run their business better. They'll have a better chance of succeeding long term. And then we have the money to go along with it if they need funding.
So we have a really good, strong local committee that goes through the loan process, you know? And I'm completely independent of those, you know, whether we approve them or not. We have a committee that does that and they're doing well. Some other things that we've been doing is, of course, for edit tourism and marketing grants. So you gave us $15,000 this year to do marketing grants for marketing festivals and events. Businesses that typically are destination businesses. We did it last year as well. So places and I sent you a kind of a breakdown of every dollar we spent with that. And the ones with asterisks by them are, those were all of the different grants. So Flora Community Club, we've given them various grants to promote, let's see, the upcoming holiday markets. They do an amazing tractor pull. They do lots of different events. The Depot, the Depot really brought a lot of people to Flora this year. We do give money to the Burlington Community Club for the Burlington Ball Festival. So we gave them a $1,000 grant. So just so you know that we have done that, of course, we've offered it to various festivals and events. Most have taken advantage of applying for those. Last year we spent almost every penny of that 15,000. So we spent $14,879 and 12 cents. So that tiny little amount carried over to this year, the little rent out, the grant, I guess is the proper term. Yeah, the Canal Center, a couple of destination businesses, Madam Carol, there's several that we have provided that grant funding for on your behalf. So my ask for 2023 is a little bit more than this year because the grant program has been successful. We will continue to do that on your behalf. So I've asked to put 20,000 in that program and keep 15,000 to promote county tourism and signage. I think it's going to be very challenging, unfortunately, in 2023 to market Carroll County. So we're going to need to probably put more, a little more funding to really make sure people still come to visit us. Because we're not exactly favored positively when you Google search us right now, so it's just fine. And the Biz Excel Entrepreneurship Program, I'm again asking for 35 to fund that for next year. In operations support, we haven't asked for an increase in operations since probably seven years ago. So that's why our total ask this year is 90. And then I know Bill, you got to tour our building, which is owned by Carroll County Chamber 5. So it continues to be a facility for co-working, where people have meetings. CASA has meetings there, Girl Scouts meet there. We're trying to raise some money to renovate the space, so it's ongoing. But we have high-speed fiber that goes through the building. We have people who work down there. And people come there as a visitor center to pick up maps and brochures, so we'll keep doing that.
I was very impressed with the facility and where you're going.
Where we're going.
You can envision not just what's there, but what's going to be there too.
Possibilities, yeah, we're excited.
You know, I like maintenance and continuation of the historic buildings you've owned.
Yeah.
So here's a big use for that building.
Yeah, built in 1850s, so it's a lot of work, but you want to save it.
It will never end on the work.
Yes, I can find it now.
So we have a total. How much?
90.
How did I miss that page?
Backside of my narrative.
Backside of the birthday. There we go.
Any other questions? I mean, I normally bring you copies of some of what we advertise in. I didn't feel the need to bombard you with that again. It's a lot of the same things. I think we had 12 or 13 listings in the State Festival Guide, the State Travel Guide. There's a Heartland Magazine. We always try to do quarterly posts of all the events coming up. So we let people know that Burlington Christmas Walk is coming up and the Canal Christmas and things like that, so. And that gets out to that Indianapolis market, it does come here. So we will keep doing that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have Kent with a request for the Highway Department. And your request is for extension of 75.
We've got Stairway 75 Extension Plan. We've gotten a federal plan for the first phase. But our portion will be for the total project about to, almost $4 million, which would be two phases in the county and one phase in Canada. And the way NDOT requires you to pay is we pay upfront and then we get reimbursed. So this money will be able to pay upfront and then we'll get reimbursed and you can continue along with the other phases of that. So I probably need more money after that.
So the immediate request was for 200?
Correct.
Now, I'm not quite, you don't probably understand completely, but I don't. But 200, you say we'll be reimbursed or how's it?
The way NDOT, it's an 80/20 program.
Okay.
So I put money in our budget for design right now, but that's only 20% of the project. So we have to pay upfront, the full amount, and then we get reimbursed 80%. And then our next payment would be, we can use that money again for the next payment.
Should we ask the towns and just benefit ceremony?
Well, we definitely need to.
You'd ask them or Camden?
We need to talk. Well, it wouldn't hurt at all to talk before about how much they think it would be good for them. But we definitely need to be in close conversation with Camden.
Correct.
Because of actual construction.
And we've met with them a few times already.
What is your, what is the feedback you're getting from them?
Oh, they're very positive about the need for that project, but they're not sure how to get it funded.
Lauren and I were involved in this, I want to know.
Yeah, I know the first study was done in 2006, I believe.
Yeah, that's about 116 years ago. This way, a new bridge out there?
Correct. So it's started 218 there and run all the way up to Hootre Hardly.
Do you just say these are replaced now?
Well, I have complaints. You can only use one vehicle.
Yeah, it's not a standard passenger car at this stage.
That could be a federal project, I double root.
Yes, the whole, the whole project will go on federally.
But phase, is phase one, which phase?
Phase one is from the Hootre Hardly end down to the price one, 650.
That's a jog, 650.
Yeah, we're planning to take out that jog and make it a smooth curve similar to what we did on the, on 75 north of Florida.
Yeah. So eradication of the jog or modification of it is in phase one.
Correct. And then phase two, go from there down to this top cam, which one is? Phase three of the cam.
If it's from basically front end to the floor.
Yeah, they're going from.
700 south.
Actually, 750.
750.
Are each phase independent? I mean, you can do one and not do two and three, or you can do one and two and not three or?
Could, but it's easier, once we start phase one, it's easier to get funding for the continuing phases.
So what's the Camden phase? What really you can do, is widen the street or?
It's a difference, you have these slightly wider, if you currently.
How much wider?
Slightly wider.
Slightly, okay.
So it won't be as wide as the county portion, which is a two 12-foot lanes and four-foot shoulders.
24 is eight, so it could be 32 foot.
Plus, plus ditch.
Right away now or?
Yeah, it will be required right away in each phase. And then Camden is the two, I think it's two 12s. It might be the 11s, running foot lanes and currently gutter and sidewalk.
Any houses that will be moved or destroyed?
I don't see the houses being moved. But we haven't got to that point for design.
When do we get to that point?
In being this first phase, we'll design the whole project.
You know, that's something that I think we need to be well aware of and looking at, talking to the community about if there's going to be any houses disrupted or homes destroyed by.
There'll be right-of-way purchase from just about every property owner, but that's just because it's going to state standard right away. But I don't see that, no moving in houses.
We're not losing any houses.
I don't lose them.
Okay. Do you know how wide the right-of-way is that the town has there now?
I do not.
I just try to picture.
Some of them are pretty close.
Yeah, they are.
And somebody parks next, you know, on what called Water Street, they park on the side of that street. They're parked in the old farm or?
Water in front of Camden School or behind Camden?
Uh, beat to the west, beat to the west of it.
Stuff to come off 218 and take it nowhere.
Water Street is what's going to be 75, right?
Yes.
400.
Huh? Yeah.
Okay. Kent, I forgot to say something here. Just wanted to see the surveyor before you leave.
Okay.
Uh-oh, we got some new ones.
Okay, who else do we have?
I, I would.
Since change the total.
And you were with the Health Department?
No, I'm with Senior and Family Services. Now, if I write down here. And I don't think you have any paperwork on us, so. Do I need to give you a minute to read that or can I?
You're right.
Go ahead, okay. Well, my name is Linda Barnard. I've been at the Senior Center for at least eight years. And we are asking for funding for transportation, gas, vehicle maintenance. We were asking this year for 15,000. You gave us 10,000 last year and I'm current, we're currently out of money. I think we have a balance, not, yeah. Beth, I went ahead and sent a, oh, is that it? Thank you.
Those are your two checks.
Okay, thank you, I don't want to forget. Thank you, I'll just tell you that or I will forget it. It's the way my mind works. We are super busy. We have increased substantially from last year. People are more aware of what we do. We've been running eight vehicles. Three of those are wheelchair vans. We've currently been helping the overload at the nursing home. We have standing appointments and we currently have three dialysis stations we transport. And we have, we ask for donations. We're not allowed to charge the cash, the people that pay cash. And Larry Leach, from the Veterans Office, he called probably a month ago and he had somebody that needed to be transported from the Carroll County Jail to Kokomo, to the mission over there. So we took care of that and we get nothing for those kinds of things. I mean, they couldn't afford to pay us. So we do take people even if they can't afford to pay us. And that's why it's so important that, I mean, I'm sitting here listening to all these people talking. There's so many needs out there, but we're, I feel like we are equally important. We are senior and family services that, that in this whole community, Carroll County, take care of the seniors and disabled. We get them where they need to go. So because we're already out of money at the end of October, we use it on gas only. We ju, I just got a van fixed for $700. And so, of course, that's coming out of someplace. I mean, and then we'll have two months of gas charges coming up too as well. So I'm just, just like everybody else, as you well know, everything's gone up, gas has gone up. We pay our employees 8 and 8.50. How we get people to work for us, but they come to work. They love what they do and they're all retired people. And so I'm just requesting 15,000 this year.
She is correct. Two checks that I gave her, she's down to zero. So she won't be, I mean, she has a balance on the one claim that's still needed to be paid.
Well, yeah, I mean, but she knows that.
Right, yeah.
Because I think last year somebody paid it and then we had to write another, we had to write a check back to you because our loans were gone.
Right.
But that was, I think, by December, yeah.
And most are by local people you're transporting?
Well, Carroll County, I mean, it's Carroll County. You go to Girlington. Currently, and this has been going on a couple of years, we go clear to Monticello. I'm saying 15, it takes us 15 minutes to get there to our client. She's on this side of the Carroll and White County line, so we have to transport her. But we go over there to get her and we were taking her to Monticello Hospital for her dialysis. So that was only two miles. Now they've closed that several months ago, the White County Hospital for Dialysis. So she has to go to Logan's Fort. So we go 15 miles to get her, to take her 25 or six more miles to Logan's Fort, come back because you don't get them for four more hours.
Right.
Go back up, we're putting about 120 to 125 miles on our van three times a week to transport her. Now, she does have Southeast Trans, but when, and so we get a little bit more, we do get reimbursed for some of her, for the monies or the miles. But not in comparison to picking somebody up at the Delta Nursing Home and taking them to dialysis, which we have to, we do, we help them with, so. Yeah, we go all over the county to pick up people and we can go all over the state of Indiana. We have a lot of people that have Indianapolis appointments, Carmel. We're going to Fort Wayne on Friday with one of the nursing home clients. So we're all over the place.
One reason why I asked was in, one of our vehicles in Logan's Fort, I think, was close to the hospital.
Yeah.
And people were taking pictures of the phone number.
Oh, they do. We get calls all the time because we're everywhere.
Right.
And Complete Auto and Tire gives us all of our oil changes free because we advertise for them too. So that's a real blessing, huge blessing. Because we've got, like I said, we have eight vehicles. I just sold one last Saturday. It was a 2005 van and it was, it seemed, it's last days for us, for transporting clients that need. So we sold it, uh-huh, and now I'm looking for another van, so.
So your total request is 15,000?
It is. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Who else do we have?
Bob in the back.
Morning.
Hello.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to hand to you if. One for each. What I give you is a written, the only written quote that I have for Deer Creek Park, community building and the restroom painting. Masonry repair, ceiling and painting. It's that three-page quote. You will see the different prices for each step of it. That's the only written quote I've been able to get. I, we had a bid for 2021, which we used in 2022 for the basement that we had talked about, the basement for tornado shelter. And that was done by this same person that you have, the bullet in front of you. Did an excellent job. We were able to get the emergency lights and the dehumidifier and new LED lighting in there. Looks like a whole different bullet. But that is the new tornado shelter for the park, the patrons in the Deer Creek area. That bid that you have there, the total I have it down is the $12,493. It explains every phase of it pretty high, I, I think. I did give one verbal bid for $5,000. But I can't get, I can't get the original people that had bid the job I think they've done with painting now to give me a written quote for this, for this request. And I can't get the other painter that gave me the verbal bid to give me a written quote. And I can't find painters. It's hard to find contractors that will do that. So I am going to ask to encumber the 3,000 from 2022 to 2023. And I would like to ask for an additional 5,000 for 2023 to, to try to find a person that will do this job at a reasonable price. Also in that, we have the 100-year anniversary coming up this year for French Coast Park. And we're planning a celebration. The plans for that will probably start here at the very end of the year, the first of the year. Probably, according to talk that we have right now, it will be probably in August. So there was a reenactment up there in 2010 for anniversary, which was really nice, so. I'm asking for $5,000 for, total of $5,000 for 2023. And then I'm going to request to encumber the 3,000 that I have for 2022.
Okay, so Bob and I, and he does not have a contract or a bill, which we can't find.
The only one I have is the one I presented.
Right, but that is from this year. Well, anyway, what I suggested was not to encumber that money, the 3,000, and just add it to his 2023 request. Because I think we can't encumber anything without a bill or a contract. And I think we'd go through better if he just asked for the full amount of 8,000.
Well, I already have 2020, or 3,000 in 2022. And it's probably that I've received and we're okay. We were either going to transfer or encumber or not.
Right.
So what's the total you're asking for? So you're asking for two different money?
Asking for 5,000.
Total?
Well, no, but the 3,000 that I'm already approved for.
Right.
It would be an additional 5,000, so the total would be 8,000.
8,000 and then you will not encumber it because there's no contract. But the money is there.
And we have a 100-year anniversary going on. I thought, you know, we could add into this. I have no idea at this time what we're going to spend.
It'd be above the 8,000?
No, 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 it would be included in there. And then we're looking at bids and for some security camera or a security system, camera system at French Coast Park. Picnic tables and walk away or having some full wheel vandalism up there and things like that, so.
It'd be a wonderful thing to have.
Yeah.
We still got one from the transportation.
Got an old one out there?
We got the old one out there.
Well, that's up to Deer Creek Park.
I would really much appreciate that. While I'm here, I won't keep too very long. I wanted to address Mr. Johnson, see what you have found out about the survey. Rusty never responded, so I haven't done anything. Pardon that, okay.
We sent the letter, though.
Never heard from him. I've tried contacting him on the phone multiple times. I just don't know. Okay, I just thought I'd ask, I hadn't talked to you in a while about that.
Do you know where physically is located his office?
Well, I, I mean, I sent him to the address. Copy, uh, okay. Can I give you a copy of the, the invoice for the survey that he, that he made?
Yep.
Okay, that, that's, that's all you've got. That's all I have.
Okay.
I wanted to report to you that the, uh, revenue from camping fees and rentals was seventy-seven, seventy-nine for this year. Our total budget was ten-six. So the use at the park is really going on, uh, going up every year. So, um, the park survey, um, the archaeological survey of French Post Park was done beginning the end of, uh, middle of October.
Where they parked?
That was just a survey to see where they wanted to dig.
Okay.
The digging, the actual, um, the actual digging will begin on November fourteenth. And I have a schedule. When I come back here, I can give you a schedule of the digs that they have.
On November the fourteenth, Monday, weekday, right?
Yeah.
They're gonna start digging?
They're gonna start laying out their, I mean, they have their survey done to see where they wanted to dig. Now they're going to, to start digging in their planted areas.
Well, I left it on.
I just found out the end of the year. I have a question about that, that after I had did my budget request for twenty twenty-three and then, um, I was told by the caretakers in Deer Creek that the septic tank is, the people that are using it for the devastation is starting to slow down. Is that something that I need to take out of my budget or request something about?
It's full, I mean, pump, is that what you're saying?
It needs pumping. I have a quote, um, if you'd like to see that from.
We have it.
Oh, we have it, yeah, okay. Yeah. They're local, right up the road.
Yeah, I've used it.
You got any money left in your budget to move anything around?
What I'm going to move on this year's budget, you know, I've requested a little more for next year's budget, but that will pretty much burn the whole additional that I got for twenty twenty-three. Not the whole fund, but the, uh, the extra money that I received over about twenty twenty-two, but.
Do you know how big the tank that is?
No, I know, but it's not very big, you know, you can just about do that and I guess I don't know.
So we dig it up?
No, they don't have to dig it up. It's exposed, it hasn't lived, that, that cameras can dump, run their hose off their cameras.
Okay, so the, the five dollars to dig is not?
No, no, no digging.
Three seventy-five for the pump.
Plus an additional fifteen cents a gallon over.
Over a thousand.
Over so many gallons.
What'd you say, Lauren?
It may not be a thousand.
Yeah, it may not be.
Yeah, I don't think it will be that much. I'm not really worried about that, uh, as far as being able to take that out of my budget. But I just thought I'd ask you about that. If that's something since, you know, it is county building and property, you know, where I would be responsible for it. And also we have a board member that is moving out of the county, um, the first of the year, so I'm going to be looking for another board member.
The county parks board. If any of you are interested in being on the county parks board, contact Bob.
And, uh, yeah, my request is.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand and, um, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Bob. Is there anything else? Anyone else who has a request for? We, uh, may need to consider, uh, Carroll Mayor in this for funding. And, uh, something that I have wanted to support through this fund is, um, Davie and Living Park out here. Uh, they need, uh, asphalt for the parking lot. And there's no way I don't think we can afford to pay for the whole parking lot, but every week, every year, do a portion, get a little bit more of it done. Uh, I think it'd be a good, good part, so, a good use for our funds. Well, we thank all of you for this. We're gonna have to, I've, I have all the requests written down. I have not added them yet, but, uh, wouldn't say wrong, I have them up here. You have them added?
That's what I had for the.
Okay, so, so far we have four hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. I said it wrong. Four hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, out of the five twenty-one requests. So that looks pretty good. We'll, we'll be able to help quite a bit. And speaking just for myself, I see these questions, see them as real community building things and things that we, it's a pleasure to help support. So we'll do our best, okay? And we will, do we have a time and we're going to be, uh, now, the procedure on this is we adopt the budget. We'll look at it, but then it has to go to the council for approval. So just because we say we want to do this, does not mean that's the final thing. And they have, uh, the right to, uh, red pen item by item. So they can say, we're gonna approve everything you've gotten except somebody here. So, uh, they have the final say. On what we adopt. And we had a little one I left in there from previous years, so. So.
The thing is, you're gonna decide on the twenty-first is what we said the last year. And then it won't go to the council until the December meeting on the fifteenth of December.
Okay. We're gonna decide on by the twenty-first and then it will go to the council on when?
December fifteenth, their next meeting.
December fifteenth, okay? So that's your schedule on how this is gonna go.
You have to get advertised as an additional. And then they will hear it on the fifteenth, so.
Okay. Any questions? It's a pleasure to work with all of you. And we're ready with that to go to environmental, environmentalist Kevin Fessler?
Yes, sir. So I'm here today just to report to you about the tire drive. Yeah. On October fifteenth, we did the tire drive of Florida, Florida County, that's using, using the shop parking lot for a, uh, place to collect them. And, uh, you got a picture here. This just shows what we collected and, uh, the advertising that I did was I put about twenty or so advertisements in basically every little shop and grocery store that I could find. We ran three ads in the comment and we had about fifty-six people. We had about fifty-six people show up, um, and if you look at the very top column, my count was, I, I showed that we collected a hundred fifty-seven small tires, ninety small tires on rims, four hundred car tires, eighty-eight, an additional eighty-eight on rims, a hundred twenty-six semi tires and additional five on rims for a total of eight hundred and sixty-six tires collected. Liberty, who, um, was the company that came to pick them up, got a total of eight hundred and sixty-eight tires when they counted them. And you'll see that their, their sorting and my sorting did not agree completely with each other. But in the end, the total amount that we collected was two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And so that covered, they basically agreed what they would figure that they owed them for those, well, that we should have collected, I should say it that way. Anyway, um, the goal for us was to collect half of what Liberty Tires' fee was gonna be, which we did. And the Liberty Tires' fee is gonna be four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and we collected two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine. So I, it went really well, very smoothly. Um, I, we, uh, the council approved about, approved ten thousand dollars and I didn't quite spend half of it. Everybody that came to the thing asked, or almost everybody asked if we were gonna do it again next spring. And I said I didn't know. Um, we had, uh, ten thousand dollars in the budget to do a similar thing for next year. And I don't, I think we probably will do it. I'm not sure. It needs to be done twice a year. I think twice a year is enough. If we do it again, we'll probably do it in the fall. I don't choose not to do it October though. I know, probably do it late September. I started running into people picking corn and beans and I had a real good, I didn't find anybody actually to do, to help me. I was volunteer, so I'm gonna have to do, be a little more creative about that in the fall. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know what happened.
We appreciate it. That's, uh.
Eight hundred and sixty-six tires, number digits.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Eight hundred tires. We don't have to pick up along the county highway right away.
Well, and I know there's more out there because I drove by three or four places where there had eighty, forty or fifty tires sitting in somebody's barn. And they didn't make it to the, to the tire drive. Whether they knew about it, I don't know. But anyway, I'm just saying there's more out there to collect. I think I might try it again next fall. And I, I really think that it's not so much that there aren't places to take them, it's that there is no place in the county for people to dump, dump ten or fifteen tires at a time. And so many people said they were thankful that there wasn't a place they had to drive a long way for to get rid of them. So I think it was a truly a, a service for our community and, um, a good way for us to, to provide something for, for everybody who wanted to participate. Anyway, that's my after action.
Okay, well, we appreciate the report and appreciate the project. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Public health nurse Julia Hoskins. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Okay, nice to meet you. I just wanted to know if I could paint the clinic room because it's very dark in there and hopefully here soon I'll open the clinic. Um, I just got my COVID vaccines last week on Friday and I'm TB test certified, so I can start getting those. Um, I also have the flu vaccines. Those are ready to go. So I just wanted to know if I could take out on my own budget to hire someone to paint. I know this is a historical downside, so we have to have approval to paint, so if I want to come out of our own program.
What color are you wanting to paint?
White. I want a white and bright. White, bright.
Oh, white, bright, I couldn't get that.
I've been in it all the time, but right now I'm picturing it's white now, isn't it?
No, it's dark.
It's black.
It's an off.
It's black?
It's an off.
Like this.
It's a darker color. It's maybe.
Have you got quotes and all that?
I have a girl.
You have to have it through your, your budget, so your board.
I okay that with the really back earth. So, um, the girl that I have talked to, she works for a local PR in town under, if you're talking to her, she's still working at five, or that's called, that's the, or tree line, I think that's called. Um, she was on vacation this week, so I haven't been able to talk to her and get an extra quote, but.
She's got an injury and all that?
She is willing to do it, yes.
She injured and all that too?
Um, I, I don't.
She will have to file, file these sort of patient, uh, insurance.
So I guess the question to us is, are we gonna say, okay, paint that room?
I was saying they're very, little, little dark.
We have to store, just work on that paint. Have that anywhere properly?
I was gonna say that.
Put lead back on the wall and buy a back rim?
I think it is dark, like red. Well, I, I'm just staying with the colors, you know, the rest of the four hours.